...that they would, but so that's one issue. And then the other thing with strategic plans, and you know, I'm in social work in education. We don't really do a lot of strategic plans, right? But, because there's no money. But we have a minimum amount of money every year to work with because we're paid for by public funds. It's not like it's a business. It's not like there's money there to do this work. So that's another one of my concerns. But I like the idea of it being more of a long-range planning, and I'd like the superintendent to weigh in on that because I do remember there was a long-range planning committee several years ago, and I wonder if that was a successful thing to do. And I think some of the issues that have been brought up to us around communication, around the holidays, all these things have been brought up to us. Maybe that, those are some of the things that we look at in our summer retreat and think about whether they would fit into something like this that's a watered-down, not watered-down, a stronger version of a watered-down thing. I meant it the other way around. And if it's okay, I would like to ask the administrative input as to if there's a preference or ideas about this, not to put you on the spot, Mary. Is that okay, Mike, to ask?
It's okay with me, sure, if it's okay with Mary.
Absolutely. You know, I think for, Ms. Varela had said it at the beginning, these advancement initiatives are the basis of a lot of districts' strategic plans. And so to take those initiatives and to look out over the next five years, and as Mr. Walker said, are there, we're now looking at wellness. What are the initiatives that we want to zero in on? What are the initiatives, to Mr. Walker's point, for me, attaining those goals? But it's very gratifying that in the beginning, we would sit here and say, do they know that that's an advancement initiative? Now, the entire district owns these initiatives. They feel responsible for achieving early literacy, closing the identified achievement gaps. You heard tonight about science and STEM. So I think looking at those initiatives, what are we missing? Where should we be going? It's very, very valuable to drive the district. So a combination of not to throw out what we're doing and to come up with a new plan, but what are we doing that's working? That's important. What goals have we achieved? And where are we going to go from here?
Ms. Pedder.
Yeah, I guess kind of my thoughts on it are just because other districts haven't been really clear or been kind of generic, which I don't like either, doesn't mean that we have to be that way. I think we can use that as something to improve upon and do what we want. And I think one of the advantages of maybe having a committee and doing a strategic plan is to not only, you know, we did have a really good process last year. We developed some really good goals, but we should really have a roadmap because, you know, two members are gone now. We have new members and to look back on what we've done and building on what we've done already instead of starting over every year and coming up with new goals. I think that it would be useful to have a committee that kind of uses everything we do every year in building that roadmap so that we can progress every year and move closer to those goals. So I think it would be useful to have this committee and to do that, to organize, not just the ideas of the committee but of all of us, and work towards that and just look at it as doing something different. If we want to be really specific about what we should be doing, then let's be really specific.
Dr. Donahue.
So I would echo a lot of what's been said already. I, I'm not interested in producing a document that is not useful in any sense of the term. There are multiple ways that you could go about it in terms of codifying some of the planning that we've done already in a single format, which has its own uses, but I, my sense of what we've sort of been talking about, one of the things we've been talking about are there are issues that we sort of can see on the horizon and we would like to address them, and we need a vehicle for addressing them constructively and in a systematic manner that meshes well with a lot of the other objectives that we have laid out for ourselves, and we don't want to trip over our own feet in terms of planning that we've done before and goals that we've set out for ourselves. So I would echo the need for some sort of process that addresses that, whether it's a strategic planning committee. I would leave it to others who are more familiar with the jargon to hash out the specific terminology, but I, I think there is a need for this, and there's a need for addressing specific issues that we see coming up and for, as I said, codifying some of the other issues that were raised in one place, but not necessarily recreating the wheel needlessly.
Mr. Walker.
So I would propose that we create a strategic issues committee with the purpose of identifying key strategic issues that are not currently being addressed and creating a plan for integrating the planning and goals that are already in place.
Second.
Is this, is this a motion, or do we want to? So I didn't quite get it all. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get, I tried to-
I move that we create a strategic issues committee, subcommittee, the purpose of which is to identify key strategic issues that are not currently being addressed and for creating a plan for integrating work that is, work and goals that is currently ongoing with any new issues that are addressed.
I think I heard a second from Ms. Bagley-Jones, so-
Can you just read it back?
Any discuss, what's that?
Can you just read it back?
I'm gonna try, I'll try.
Oh, wait, can I just-
Please.
Are we, are you gonna, are you, because there's a proposal here. Are you adjusting this? Do you want to keep any of this, or are you making a whole new proposal? I just want to be clear.
Can I just make a, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna make a suggestion. I think, I think what Leroy is, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, is making a concrete proposal. This was just for discussion purposes.
Right.
But Leroy is making a concrete proposal, and my suggestion is that if that proposal is, is accepted, then we can put some meat on the bone in advance of our next meeting.
Right.
So I think that's, I think, personally, I think it would be a very good step in the right direction, and then, and then we can work and comment in the next week, and maybe you send all the comments to me, and then we can have a further discussion at the next meeting. Does that make sense?
Good to me.
So we have a motion, excuse me, made and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Downs.
At the end of that motion?
I believe it was, create a plan for integrating work and goals with the ongoing, ongoing, I have the ongoing issues, but-
For integrating current goals and objectives that are in place with new strategic issues that are identified.
Do you have it? Okay. Ms. Varela.
So, so just to be clear, so that with the new verbiage, and we would, we would come back next week and, and discuss what the, what those specific issues would be for the committee, and then my other question is, I know originally you had spoken that we would, we would pow out, you know, who would best represent this committee, you know, educators, parents, students, other members of the community, and also discuss that at that point in time as well?
I would suggest, given the hour, that we would discuss that.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, discuss the, both, both putting a little meat on the bone and also the membership.
Great. Thank you.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. So we are on the way for a strategic issues subcommittee. Next issue is summer retreat, summer meeting schedule. You have a calendar, and let me just throw out some initial thoughts for our summer meeting schedule and summer retreat. The summer retreat is really a goal-setting exercise. Last year, we had a facilitator help us, and as Leroy pointed out, it was a very useful exercise and very, I think, very successful exercise setting goals and objectives, excuse me, for the district. And I believe last year, we did it in August. I think it's probably a good time to do it. And so what I would suggest to you is, just as a, as an outside, we have meetings scheduled in June for the 10th and the 24th. I would suggest to you that maybe we could have, depending on people's schedules, one meeting in July rather than two, and then we could schedule two meetings in August, one of which, one of which would be this retreat goal-setting exercise. And one idea that I will suggest to you is, I think we can comply with the open meeting law by having that on a Saturday, so if people are interested in having it on a Saturday afternoon, and if we, if we thought we could spend two or three hours, you know, maybe between one or two to four o'clock, it would seem to me it might be a nice, nice way to lead into maybe a cookout after having a little goal-setting exercise. So, so my thought is if we, if we wanted to do it on a Saturday, we could spend, you know, a certain amount of time, maybe one or two to four, and then, and then have a cookout at my house afterwards. So, so that's, that's the thought. So I open it up for, for discussion. Either, either on the dates or the, the idea for the retreat. Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Does anybody else want to speak before me, because I must add too much coffee today? Okay. I think that's a great idea. I would ask that we go in July because I think that having two new members, not putting you two on the spot, the sooner, the fresher the school year is in my mind, the better it is. By August, you know, it's like, what did we talk about? And then we're gearing up for September. I just feel like if we could get it in earlier in the summer, I feel like it would be fresh in our minds. We get our, you know, we talk about what we need to work on. I just, I find when it was later in the summer, I didn't, I don't know. But I, I go either way, but I just would make a plug for having it earlier to get things going.
I think, and the administration can correct me if I'm wrong here, I think one of the reasons we had it a little later was that there was an opportunity to have some data for the, from the prior year. I don't know if that opportunity exists, whether we'll have more data in August than July, but, you know, I would, I would ask just-
Particular year you won't have it till September, October, with POC.
Okay, okay. All right. So any, any other thoughts on dates, retreat schedule?
I will point out that my, my personal schedule, I'll be out of state on July 11th and 18th.
Is it, I'm sorry, Kevin, the 11th through the 18th?
11th and the 18th, correct.
11th and the 18th.
Just those two days or through the whole?
The, the week in between.
The whole week.
Specifically that, that Saturday, those two Saturdays.
Okay. Well, let me, let, maybe we start it this way. So we have a meeting, meeting scheduled on the 10th and the 24th of June. So the next natural meeting would be on the 8th. Kevin's gonna be out of town on the 15th if we would hit, have one in mid-month. Is it, how does it strike people if we had a meeting, meeting on the 8th and then had a, had the retreat on the 25th, the Saturday? Is that-
So here, here we go with the schedules.
Yeah, yeah, and, and maybe we won't fix it.
I'm out of town on the 11th, 18th, and the 25th.
25th, too?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And August 1st is the day before my birthday, so I'm not available then either.
Oh, come on, we'll have a cake. Where's August 2nd? It's June's birthday. What about the 1st, then?
Somehow, I'm not surprised that Mr. Walker is a Leo.
What about Saturday, the 1st?
Saturday, yeah, that's-
That's the day before my birthday, so-
That's your birthday, I'm sorry. I'm out of town, though.
Good luck to the rest of you, but-
I'm out of town that weekend, anyway.
All right. Well, okay, so how about this? And I appreciate the idea about having it in July, but it doesn't seem like that's gonna work.
No, that's fine.
So, so how about we look at a meeting, if we have a meeting on the 24th of June, Kevin's out of town on the 15th. If we had a meeting on the 22nd, it's a little bit longer than I would-
I'm sorry, which month?
I'm, I'm sorry, the, in July, going to a meeting on the 22nd, it's a little bit longer than I'd like to go.
I'm, I'm out of town that week.
Out of town on the 22nd? Okay.
That whole week.
Whole week.
Is Leroy out on the 8th, too? What about the 8th?
Well, we could go back, we could do the 8th.
The 8th is fine.
That'll be, that'll be the 8th. So do we want to say the 8th?
Yeah, fine.
I'm, I'm not sure, but, but I'll, but let's put the 8th. Let's put down the 8th.
Okay.
So July 8th, so all right, so we're making progress.
Uh-huh.
So the 8th, we have, and then if we had a, if we went on to August, excuse me-
The 15th.
And had a meeting, I'm, the 15th, I was, I was thinking maybe if we were talking about two, two meetings in August, maybe we'd have one on the 5th, because, you know, we'd have, we'd have, that would be about a month between the 8th and the 5th. So we have one on the 5th, and then maybe the Saturday meeting, either the 15th or the 22nd.
But then aren't we gonna have a third meeting right before school starts in August?
I don't know. School starts in September this year.
After Labor Day this year.
After Labor Day. So I think we, if we met on the 22nd, then that might line us up for having a meeting maybe on the, it looks like it would be the 2nd of September.
Is that after school starts or before?
I don't think so.
First day.
That's the first day?
First day of school, so-
Yeah.
I think we need a meeting right before.
Yeah, probably meet before, yeah.
We do or we don't?
We do.
Probably want to meet typically.
We do meet before school starts.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right, so how about if we met on the 5th? If we had the, this sounds like a lot in August, so-
Yeah, that's three meetings. I would do the 15th and then do the meeting before.
I, I can't do the 15th, I'm away.
Okay.
But I can do the 22nd, and I can do anything else.
22nd.
How about the 8th?
8th would work.
Yeah, I'll be away the other Saturdays.
How about the 8th?
Yeah.
I'm not available on the 8th either. Sorry.
All right.
Your way? Your way on the 8th?
Well, Grace is in a play, and it's in the afternoon and the evening, and so, sorry.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. It's fine. And the 15th doesn't work either, right? Did someone say the 15th?
That's, I'm fine for the 15th, but somebody else said the-
No.
No.
No? How about the 22nd?
No.
No? All right. So we're, so our Saturdays are not, are not lining up. Are not lining up at all. Okay.
Maybe we could check some Friday afternoons or something.
Friday afternoon?
A lot of Friday.
Okay, yeah, sure.
I could definitely do like a half, yeah.
Sure.
Friday afternoons, maybe?
Okay.
Like a one to four, and then, yeah.
So 14th?
Oh, the 14th?
14th, 14th of August for the-
I'm away, I'm away the 10th through that whole weekend, so, sorry.
All right.
The 7th or the 21st?
How about the 7th?
7th, yeah.
7th, I'm available.
7th?
I can do 7th, but we wouldn't be doing the 5th and the 7th.
No, we would not.
Okay, so the 7th?
7th.
Does that work for-
Yeah, we have to, does that work for, and, and this is all subject, you know, we're gonna try, this is tentative. We're gonna try to make sure, you're not bound and, bound to this. We're gonna make sure it works for everyone, so. All right, so let's put a placeholder on the 7th.
So we're thinking we start about 1?
1 or 2, yeah. And then, and then we could still have a, you know, some burgers around 4 or 5.
And then-
2?
What's it, 1 or 2? Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, I think we, 2 is better for you, okay.
All right, I gotta work in the morning.
Definitely school committee meeting on the 26th.
The 26th.
Of August. Because we have to meet before, so that's the Wednesday before.
Okay. Is everybody good with the 26th?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
The only question is whether, whether we may need another meeting before that, another Wednesday meeting before that, because we're, we're going between the 8th of July and the 26th.
What if we moved that one to the 29th?
Well, then we're going-
July 29th.
Then we're, then we're going between the 24th and the 29th.
No, because we have the school committee on the 8th, right?
On the 8th. Well, so you want to have a meeting on the 8th and then a meeting on the 29th of July, and then the retreat on the 7th of August, and a school committee meeting on the 26th of August. How does that sound? Again, nobody's bound, we can, we can put it in stone next time.
So is it, I thought that you said you just wanted to have one in July and two in August.
I did.
Besides the, besides the retreat, you want two in August besides the retreat?
Well, I think now we're lining up just for one in August besides the retreat, because we're talking about the 8th and the 29th of July, and then, and then the retreat on the 7th of August, and a meeting on the 26th of August.
Okay. It wouldn't go so long. It would still be three weeks, though.
Yep. How does everybody feel about that schedule? All right, let's, let's pencil it in, and you can go home and check and make sure that it works, and, and then we'll try to lock it in, we'll lock it in next, next meeting. And I think what, what we're gonna try to do, as we did last year, is to get, have a facilitator from the Mass Association of School Committee, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, so we'll see if we can, we can get a facilitator for, for whatever, for that date or where, whatever date we choose. All right, so there we go.
Excellent.
Approval of, if we're all, any other comments, questions about schedule? Onto vendor warrants. Mr. Pavlichek, Dr. Pavlichek.
We have vendor warrant number 47 dated May 21st in the amount of $559, $559,550.86.
All right, do I have a motion for approval of vendor warrant number 47 dated May 21st in the amount of $559,550.86?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? One abstention. Any other vendor warrants, Dr. Pavlichek?
No.
All right, we're done with vendor warrants. Transportation and Traffic Subcommittee report. I'll be brief. The Transportation Traffic Subcommittee met, developed a list of issues from each of the schools and with the assistance of parents from each of the school districts. And we developed a list of issues for each of the four elementary schools and Pierce. And we had two sessions with the chief of police, who is gracious enough to meet with us on the two Mondays of town meeting. There was a very, I think, a very good exchange of issues and potential solutions to the problems that were identified, and as I said, that happened on two occasions. The chief and Lieutenant Richmond met with, met with us on two occasions, and they are in the process of developing some solutions. He articulated some solutions, some potential solutions, and when, when those are a little bit more definite, then I can report to you what they are. I will send you, I don't know that I've circulated the list of issues that were, I haven't, I don't think, so I'll send that around just so everybody sees what, what the committee came up with in terms of issues, and then as soon as, you know, I know the chief has been working on some potential solutions, and as soon as we have something definite on that, we'll, we'll report out on that. And there is a bike rodeo coming up.
Bike rodeo.
Bike rodeo. I don't, I, I don't, I apologize, I don't remember the specifics. I don't think it, it's gonna happen before our next meeting. I think it may be June 12th. So hopefully I can give you a little bit more of a, of a, I, I believe it's gonna be on June 12th, and I believe it's gonna be at Pierce, but, but more to come.
I don't know about that.
Do we even know what a bike rodeo is?
It's, it's, it's in connection with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, and they, they are putting on a bike rodeo, and I should know more about what it is, but I-
Probably should, too.
But I, yeah. So, so I'll send around information on that and, and report on that more fully at our next meeting. And that is the Transportation and Traffic Subcommittee report. Approval of minutes. Unless anyone has, has any questions on Transportation and Traffic Subcommittee. Approval of minutes. Let's see, where are the others? So here we are. Excuse me. The first set of minutes is the minutes of the school committee's school choice open public hearing dated May 6th, 2015. I will move approval of those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Those are approved unanimously. Second, we have the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee, excuse me, held on May 6th, 2015. I will move approval of those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Dr. Donahue on the second. Any discussion? Mr. Walker?
Under topic 3, my motion was to approve swimming as a self-sustaining sport with the flexibility to set fees at a level sufficient to cover their expenses. So I would make that change. It's a little clearer than what we have here.
Yep. I just want, Moore, did you get that? Did you-
Go along with the word.
No. So rather than what's here, I would say, starting from, we make this a self-sustaining, to make swimming a self-sustaining sport with the flexibility to set the fees at a level sufficient to cover their expenses.
Do you want to take out varsity?
I don't see varsity in that sentence.
And at the bottom?
Yeah, the last sentence at the bottom.
Oh, I'm, well, it's in here. Oh, this is, I'm sorry. So strike the sentence that says, above that, that says, "Mr. Walker said he will move to make this a self-sustaining sport to set the fee at the level to cover the sport." It's in there twice.
Higher.
Uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6, 6 lines and, and 7 lines up from the bottom. It's in there twice. It's fine, the, the last line is exactly what I said.
Any further discussion? Motion for approval of, the, the, the motion is for approval of the men, of the minutes as amended. All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. Excuse me. Citizen speak, topic response. Next meeting agenda items.
What do you have so far?
Anyone who has any next meeting agenda items?
We were gonna talk about the holidays.
Yes, that'll be on the agenda. That'll be on the agenda.
I have one. I got a call from a parent, which I've discussed with the superintendent regarding headline. I'd just like an update on what the, what percentage of teachers are regularly entering information on headline, and a clear statement of whether or not we have the contract language that we need right now to require all teachers to comply, or whether we need new contract
All right, we'll add that probably under the superintendent's report.
And the parent liaison goals.
Parent liaison goals. That'll be under the superintendent's report as well. All right. Anything further on that? Citizen speak. We don't have anybody left here. We have broken the Bagley-Jones rule, but we will continue to break it because we need to move now into executive session. The purpose of the executive session will be to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, the discussion of which in open meeting might have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the, of the school committee, and that would be negotiating strategy with respect both to AFSMI and MEA. So I would move that we enter executive session for that purpose, not to return to open session after the executive session. So there's two ways to do it. You can, we can either move to go into executive session and then come back, but since we have nothing on the agenda, the motion is to move to executive session, not to return to open session after the conclusion of the executive session. And this is a roll call vote. We have to say, we have to say yes or no. So the motion is to move to executive session for the purpose that I stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So we will have our roll call vote. Ms. Varela.
Aye.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Ms. Padere?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
All right, we are moving into executive session. Thank you all, and we will see you on June 10th.